So it's five o'clock. I'll call the meeting to order now. This is the meeting of the Committee on City Services and the Committee on Legislative Matters for May 2nd, 2022. So. Mary Ann LaBarge is not here yet. I don't see her yet. I guess we could just do the roll for City Services, Pam.
Absolutely. I'm just, so I've made all of the city councillors a co-host. And if you wouldn't mind just keeping an eye on whether or not there's anybody in the waiting room while I'm doing the roll call. Okay, so councillor Foster.
I'm here.
Councillor Gore.
Here.
Councillor Perry.
Here.
And councillor LaBarge. Here she comes. She's coming in right now. Good afternoon councillor LaBarge. We just began the meeting and I'm in the middle of doing the roll call and I just want to confirm that you are here. Councillor LaBarge, are you here?
I'm here.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, great. Thanks Pam. So just an announcement that this meeting and all who are on it are being audio and video recorded. Is there any members of the public who would like to make a public comment at this time? If you're a member of the public and you would like to make a public comment, you can raise your virtual hand. Keep your comment to two to three minutes, but it's not, it's not strictly like full comment. So I see one hand. Andy Anderson.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
So I'm Andy Anderson. I'm with Voder Choice Massachusetts. And I just wanted to comment a little bit about the benefits of ranked choice voting and why this is an important way of voting that I hope to see Northampton adopt. So the goal here is to have the best representation possible for the various offices in the city of Northampton. The, there are several ways that people go about doing this for cities and so on, and Northampton is a mixture of them. So they have districts for the city council, for example, and the districts are designed hopefully to provide some representation across the city. With the assumption that geography is going to be conclusive and getting fair representation. The idea of representation here, we can go back to John Adams, the second president of the United States and writer of the Massachusetts Constitution, which is the oldest extent operating constitution in the world. And provided a lot of the ideas from the US Constitution. He once commented that the greatest care should be employed in constituting representative Assembly. It should be a miniature, exact portrait of the people at large. You should feel reason and act like them to do strict justice at all times. More recently, we can quote Elizabeth Warren, who succinctly says, if you don't have a seat at the table, you might end up on the menu. So the goal here with ranked choice voting is to ensure fair representation of all members of the public. So the way it goes about doing this is in two ways. First off, it institutes a system for eliminating the weakest candidates and allowing subsequent rounds of voting where individuals get to vote again, everybody. Either they vote for their first choice, if they're still in the race, or if their candidate has been eliminated, you get to vote for their next choice. And this is done in a compact way in a single election. And the result is to avoid vote splitting. So similar candidates, votes coalesce and people who have similar ideas can get a representative at the table. The other way it goes about doing this is if there are multiple seats that are being elected, such as for two at-large seats in the city council and the school board and so on. It wants, it has a system for making sure that votes don't all pile up on one very popular candidate, but instead get distributed from the top down so that the majority still has control of the city council or other body that's distributed, makes sure that votes coalesce at the bottom to provide representation, but it also distributes at the top to ensure majority control, which is what we expect in democracy. And it does this again by looking at taking some of the vote from the candidate who has enough votes to win and distributing them, the access to second choices of people who voted for that candidate. So it's a very fair system. It's known mathematically to work very well. It's used in a number of cities and it's really a very great way to ensure representation in the city. So that's a basic summary that I'd like to provide. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Are there any other people here for public comment? Okay. Don't see any other hands. Um. So now we'll go to items of the committee. We're going to do the facial recognition ordinance review and Javier and Katie from ACLU are here to talk about the facial recognition ordinance review. You can provide an overview of your thoughts and then the committee members will ask questions. So Javier and Katie can take it away.
Thank you so much councillor woman Gore. Thank you so much to the, to the rest of the committee for being here. Councillor Garret Perry, councillor Malton, councillor Jared, councillor woman LaBarge, councillor woman Carrie Foster. Three years ago in 2019, the Northampton City Council passed unanimously a ban on the use of facial surveillance technology as a municipal law. Unanimously was really important. We had passed these bans all across the Commonwealth, from Boston, Somerville to all the way to Springfield, East Hampton and Northampton. This has been really important for the work that protecting the privacy and the civil rights of people across the Commonwealth with a technology that is not at the federal level regulated, right? We have had, I have had conversations with, with different of you passing by and talking a little bit about this, talking about this technology. Today, what we're planning to do with my colleague Kate is to answer questions, to talk a little bit about our position in relationship to, to the review of the ordinance. But also my colleague Kate, we will, is going to be talking about her experience and what came out with the commission that was created in the legislature to study the use of facial recognition software. So I'm, I'm going to give pass to my colleague Kate Crawford.
Thanks, Javi. Good evening, everyone. Thanks Chair and councillors. My name is Kate Crawford. I run something called the Technology for Liberty Program at the ACLU of Massachusetts. I'm based in Boston, where I live. As Javi said, we were really happy to work with the Northampton City Council some years back to pass one of the first prohibitions on municipal government use of facial recognition technology in the Commonwealth. Since then, a number of other communities have followed suit, most recently the city of Worcester, which passed a ban on face surveillance just a few months ago. Becoming the eighth community in the state to do so. And we're having conversations with folks in a few municipalities in other communities that are hoping to follow suit. So your example in Northampton has inspired many people across the Commonwealth to take similar action. Including, as Javi said, the four largest communities in the state, Boston, Springfield, Worcester and Cambridge. So we launched this campaign in 2019 because we were really concerned about what I think is a uniquely dangerous technology for a couple of reasons. Facial surveillance is dangerous when it works and when it doesn't. And there is a lot of evidence to, to lead us to the conclusion that the technology is not very good yet, particularly for some of the most pernicious uses, some of the types of facial recognition deployment that raise the most serious civil rights and civil liberties concerns, namely its use for surveillance. So you've probably seen in movies like, you know, the, the Bourne trilogy and other like spy thrillers that facial recognition technology can be used to analyze video data. So, you know, information from surveillance cameras can be used to track people across cameras to locate people in a crowd, for example. This is one of the most dangerous uses of the technology in our view, both because it enables governments and in some cases corporations to follow where people go in, in public space. Depending on the size of the surveillance network, you know, from the moment they leave their home in the morning until the moment they return at night. It also happens to be a form of facial recognition technology that is not very sophisticated yet, technologically speaking. High, high error rates have been found when the technology has been tested on live video in places like England in recent years, some cases with error rates up to 90%. And so that's one concern. There are also other concerns related to reliability. So there have been a number of studies that have shown that facial recognition technology performs more poorly when analyzing the faces of women, people with darker skin, young people, children and elderly people. So you must be wondering, who, who does that leave? The answer is middle-aged white men is the demographic for whom the technology works the best generally. So there are reliability and accuracy concerns. There are also pretty substantial civil rights and civil liberties concerns that interestingly are actually heightened in some cases when the technology improves, that, you know, the better it gets. Councillor Ben Uen-Campin, a city councillor in Somerville, who was the leader of our effort to, to pass a face surveillance ban there, actually the first community in Massachusetts to do this, put it nicely when he said that government use of facial recognition is, is akin to the government requiring everyone to tattoo a barcode on their forehead that is only readable by the government. So that, you know, wherever you go, you can essentially be scanned and your presence documented or your identity checked. And in this country, we don't do that. We don't live in a papers please society where the government can just go up to anybody at any time and say, you know, give me your papers. I want to know who you are and what you're doing here. So that's another concern that we have about, about the unregulated use of this technology. So Javier asked me to speak a little bit about what the, the commission at the state level did. So I'll just do that quickly and then I'd be happy to answer any questions that folks have. I was a commissioner on a legislative commission that was established by the Massachusetts State Legislature in the omnibus police reform legislation that passed at the end of 2020. This commission was created to study the use of facial recognition, some of the accuracy and bias issues, some use cases, look at what other communities, other states, other countries are doing with respect to regulation and then have a conversation about what, if any, regulations ought to be in place in Massachusetts to protect the public interest with respect to government use of this technology. And so we concluded that process a few months ago and published a report that was endorsed by the ACLU, the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, NAACP, New England Association. The who else endorsed the report? The Mass Bar Association, the Committee for Public Council Services, which is the state's public defender's office, as many of you know. The Attorney General's designee supported the report and actually the state police designees supported the report, among many other people, including experts, lawmakers, et cetera. And so it's a pretty, pretty impressive group of people to get to agree to, to, to agree on, on an issue that's you know, potentially controversial, or at least that, you know, may be likely to spark disagreement between civil libertarians and the police. And what did the report recommend? Well, it recommended that the legislature pass a law to require that police have to get a warrant to use, to perform a facial recognition search, that the process throughout the state where, whereby the police could request a facial recognition search be centralized at the state police. So in other words, you know, the Northampton police would not have their own facial recognition technology. Somebody on the commission who's in law enforcement put it this way, you know, that doesn't, he said, that doesn't bother me. I don't object to that. You know, when we take a rape kit, for example, we don't do that testing in-house. We send it to a lab, right? So it's sort of a similar concept. Instead of every police department in the state having their own facial recognition technology, they would, there would just be one system that the state police runs. And in order for, you know, any police department, Northampton, any other to request that, that, that a search be performed by the state police in a criminal investigation to try to identify someone, you know, from an image. The, the commission recommended that the police would be required to get a warrant, to go to a judge, get a warrant and take that image with the warrant to the state police and say, you know, we'd like you to use facial recognition to try to identify this person. The commission also recommended that there be due process protections attached to that process so that criminal defendants who were subjected to facial recognition searches would be notified so that they would have an opportunity to challenge the use of that technology to seek more information about the search, about who performed the search, the kinds of training that that person went through, the technology that was used to perform the search and other information. And that the commission also recommended that the use of facial recognition in criminal investigations, again, centralized through the state police, be limited to the most serious types of criminal investigations. The report also recommended that the legislature prohibit the use of facial recognition for that more dangerous, pernicious type of deployment that I mentioned before, which is for surveillance. So we are very supportive of that recommendation. It also recommended that the legislature pass a law saying that the government cannot use what's called affect recognition or emotion analysis technology, which purports to be able to identify how someone is feeling based on the physical characteristics of their face. I, I don't think I have to tell you that that could, that could turn out really bad, especially for some of us who have what is known as resting bitch face. Excuse me, excuse my French. And so those were among the many recommendations that the, the legislative commission forwarded to the legislature. And so what's happening now is the Judiciary Committee, which was responsible for overseeing this commission. The chairs are Representative Mike Day on the House side and Senator Jamie Eldridge on the Senate side. Their teams are working on some legislation right now, which we hope will be favorably reported out of judiciary soon and we hope will pass this legislative session. So that's the update from the state side. And I'm happy to, to answer any questions if anyone has any. Thank you.
Thank you for that overview. It was really informative. Are there any questions from the committee? Councillor LaBarge?
Thank you. Kate, I have, I have, I would like to talk with Kate.
Yes, please.
Hi, thank you Kate. Anyways, I am curious because I just heard you talking about the committee in, in the state working on an issue which I feel is really serious is facial recognition. Even as councillors, we have no protection at all, at all with the zooming or no matter what, even if we're at council chambers. It had happened to us with the defunding the police, okay? And we were given a five-minute break, a five-minute break. I forgot to shut off my camera, but previous to that, I have nothing to hide here. I received two calls, Kate, from my brother from Georgia, okay? I'm his only sister, sibling, and he was very concerned because of the protesting that had occurred where the protesters were going to every councillor's home, okay? So he wanted to make sure I was okay and my family. Anyways, I did not answer those two calls. Immediately when it was announced we could go on a five-minute break, the call came in. Thank God I had a witness here, which was Ruth McGrath, because I also had difficulties with my computer. So she was here from where to help me out to make sure that my computer would be operable. Well, I got on the phone not realizing I did not shut off my camera, Kate. An accusation was made from the police department in our city that us councillors had changed our mind with our voting while we went on break. Plus the fact I was looked at big time as apparently talking with a councillor on the phone. And for 20 years, I have never talked to any councillor on a break at city council, ever, ever. I was outraged with that. And anyways, I, my brother, I asked him to send a letter how he talked with me and I told him how I was on a break at city council. Plus Ruth McGrath that was here with me also sent a letter to our city solicitor and to the police department. So where is the protection for councillors also? I feel there's none, none. Thank God, we won our case, no question about it, because I would have went further with this. If you're innocent, you have your rights to prove of being innocent. And I just thought it was awful because I didn't shut off my video. I'm learning to do, working with zooming and everything and completely forgot because of the two calls previously from my brother, not knowing if something happened to him. And then on break time, just as soon as I went on it, Ruth said, it's your brother again. I answered it. So here, an accusation is made. Every councillor apparently was talking on the phone, all right? And we changed our votes. That's a direct lie, a direct lie. So, but at least we were proven to be innocent, but where is the fine line? I believe in protecting people on the outside, but there is absolutely no protection for city councillors or even school committee members right down the line. That's, that's my feelings.
Councillor woman LaBarge, I, I, I will, I will take this, have in mind that I, I, I understand a little better the, the background context of what you are talking about, right? And, and it, it is complicated, isn't it? Because the, when we're talking about the open meeting law and, and serial communication and communication between elected officials and at the same time, in the same track, you're having conversations and arguments during city council that people feel really deep about it. These kinds of assumptions can be made, right? As you said, this was fully investigated, was proved beyond doubt that a non-city council member at that point, if, if I remember well, this was 2020, no city council at that point, city council member have violated open meeting law or communicated in any way. And I think that you're, you're correct in, in the frustration. What, what I would recognize is that when we're talking about situations or interactions that may happen during city council meetings, the expectation of privacy because of a meeting law in, in relation to communication between elected officials suddenly gets diminished. And that's something that I can talk to you later next week or this week, we can get together.
Okay, thank you so much.
Are there any other questions from committee members? Oh, councillor Nash, did you have a question?
Thank you councillor Gore. So my first question is, is legislative matters open and am I part of the team that's, in other words, is legislative matters, are they, have they convened? And so therefore I'm part of the, the folks asking questions here?
Legislative matters haven't convened yet, no.
Okay, I will withhold my questions then.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councillor Foster?
Thank you. Kate, I had a question for you then. You were talking about under warrant, like there, there being a use for facial recognition under warrant. And I'm just looking at our city ordinance, which just, which expressly prohibits using any city resources for any facial recognition. And I'm wondering if this, if that's the state and federal law supersede in case of a warrant? Or if that's something that we should be considering with this ordinance?
Yeah, great question. Thanks councillor. So the state, state law would preempt the local ordinance, but it's important to recognize that it wouldn't preempt the entire thing. So it wouldn't preempt, for example, the portion of the ordinance that prohibits any Northampton entity from, you know, buying facial recognition technology, for example, right? It would merely allow the Northampton Police Department to go through the process that's outlined in state law, you know, if we can get this done, to allow them to ask the state police to, to perform a search on their behalf pursuant to the state law. Yeah. So the answer is yes and no. It would, it would preempt portions of the local ordinance, but not the whole thing. And, you know, I just want to say one more thing about that, which is that it's not clear if the legislature is going to act at all this session. It's also not, I mean, we hope they do, just to be clear about that. We really hope they do. But that's not certain, obviously. And if they do, we're not sure what the scope of that regulation will be. In other words, whether it will only apply to law enforcement or whether the legislature will, will contemplate regulating non-police government use of facial recognition. Because we haven't really talked about it today, but we talked about it a few years ago when this ordinance passed. Schools can use this technology, you know, it could be used by the transportation department. There, there are a number of other government agencies outside of law enforcement that this ordinance also applies to. And, you know, depending on what the state legislature does, we would have to kind of come back and see if, see what, what portions of the Northampton ordinance are preempted by state law and we just don't know yet.
And just to go a little deeper into what Katie's talking about, when we talk about the, the regulating and banning the use of facial surveillance, we, we do not center this in law enforcement, right? A really good example right now, we passed a ban on the use of facial surveillance in Springfield. One of the big issues right now in Springfield, it's the, that the school committee signed an agreement with the police department. And right now, the police department has sort of unregulated access to the live feed of the cameras of every single public school. of the cameras of every single public school in Springfield. We are really concerned about that, deeply concerned about civil liberties in relationship to that kind of access. At the same time, my thought is, thank God that we passed the ban on the use of face surveillance technology, because if somebody is using a, a, a camera system to be able to do live surveillance, that paired with the use of this software, it's pretty detrimental, it's really dangerous. So we, this, the issue of facial surveillance go beyond law enforcement.
I have a question. I was, I was really blown away by the fact that you said they have a technology that can see your facial emotions. And I, I was just wondering, like, do you think this technology is going to go further and further into, like, being able to, to advance? Or do you think there's some way that we can kind of put a stop on the technology before it like advances to even more outrageous things?
Great question, Counselor. So, you know, the First Amendment provides very broad protection for artistic and business innovation. There's not a whole lot that the government can do to stop the development of technology. And, you know, maybe that's a good thing, you know, that the government is not playing a role in determining what people can create. However, it is our view at the ACLU that the government must play a stronger role in regulating how these technologies can be used. And so that's why we're really grateful for the leadership that Northampton has shown for the state and for the country, and frankly, for the world that is grappling with these issues more and more every day. You know, we're working on the government side of surveillance issues. We also are working on the corporate side. And so while our work does not involve trying to stop the development of new technologies, it does involve trying to ensure that the law protects people's civil rights and civil liberties with respect to how those technologies are used. And so an example with respect to the, you know, affect recognition emotion analysis technology is, you know, there are some folks in the civil rights community who think that those technologies have no place in government. We are among those, you know. We, the worst-case scenario would be to see in a courtroom in 10 years, you know, the police introducing evidence at trial that says, well, Your Honor, we have this artificial intelligence system that we use to analyze the video of this person saying, I didn't commit the crime, and the algorithm says that he was lying and he, you know, so we're going to submit this as evidence. That's a terrible road for us to go down, so we think we ought to nip it in the bud now. That's what we're trying to accomplish at the state level. That's what you all have done in Northampton already. But there's also, there are also ways that this technology can be used by private actors and are using it, in fact. We're on Zoom right now. Just last week, there was a report that said that Zoom is considering introducing some form of affect recognition into their technology. Some corporations that use video software for job interviews are using affect recognition in that process to help determine whether someone is, you know, reliable, trustworthy, you know, excited, bored, whatever, during an interview. So there are folks who are working on, on that side as well, trying to get Congress, which is a little bit like, you know, banging your head up against a wall, and also state legislatures to take action to try to impose some, you know, bright red line regulations so that these technologies can't be used to hurt people in areas like employment and housing and other areas where people are seeking services that they, you know, or, or opportunities that they need in order to function in society. So yes, you're right. You know, there are a lot of areas where this technology can be used to, to, to harm people, frankly. It's our view at the ACLU that stopping technological development is not only probably unconstitutional in many cases, but not really plausible. And that the, the thing that the government ought to be doing at the local, state, and federal levels is regulating how these technologies can be used to make sure that they can't hurt people. Thank you for that question.
Counselor Perry?
Yes, thank you, Kate and Javier, for explaining some of this stuff. My question really comes down to data and storage of data. A lot of the discussion that came around dash cams recently was about not necessarily using facial recognition, but where the data is going to be stored. And I was wondering if there's any regulation down the pipeline about how long certain companies can hold on to data. You know, I know that you said that, you know, the, on the federal level, they can start requisitioning some of the data. And, you know, if you could maybe explain that a little more, that would help.
Yeah, so we don't have any real data privacy law in Massachusetts. It's something that we at the ACLU have been working on this legislative session. A bill that we are supporting is called the Massachusetts Information Privacy Act, which would create some bright line rules with respect to how companies can, you know, collect and process and share personal data. I think on the government contract side, you know, the, probably the best place to apply that kind of pressure is in the contract that the city signs with a given technology manufacturer to say, you know, we agree to pay you X amount of money and you agree that you're going to, you know, purge the records every 30 days or whatever. You know, the one thing that the city needs to be careful of when you're, you know, thinking about data storage is the public records law. Because there are mandatory retention requirements under state law, which are good. You know, you don't want, you don't want a government official deleting all their emails every day so that nobody can ever find out what, what they were saying or doing. And when the government engages in a contract with a company to procure something like dash cams or something like that, all the data that's collected through that technology is also subject to the public records law and the state records retention requirement. So it's a little bit of a balance between, you know, making sure that you're not in violation of state law with respect to records retention, but also trying as much as you can to ensure that the data is not kept for longer than necessary and most crucially, is not shared with anyone absent the city's knowledge and approval. So, you know, those are, those are the kinds of things that I think it's important to get written in a contract. You know, I've read some terrible contracts that cities have signed with technology providers that essentially give the technology provider the rights to use the data however they want, and that would be a bad model for a, a public entity to pursue.
And Counselor Perry, just, just to add a little bit to that. And in, in situations when, when municipal entities, they got, get, get into a contract, many times you have also to think about how, when the municipality has to take a decision about what kind of material is created within the municipal structure. What kind of material do you, do I want to have to get a point when I'm, you know, I'm staring hours of video to the cloud? What are the risks? We saw, for example, during the term administration, the targeting of undocumented folks in different levels, right? We know that in California, they were being targeted using automatic like readers. So also retention, the contract is extremely important. But I also want to sort of throw to the mix the fact that sometimes municipalities and in, and government institutions has, have to ask themselves if the material they are about to create is storage, it's, it's worth doing it, right? The most secure material is the one that you do not create. That's for sure.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Any other questions from the committee? Okay, well, thank you, Javier and Katie. Appreciate you. Oh, Counselor Jared.
Yeah, thank you. Would you consider that if we, I think some members of Legislative Matters have questions, if we were to convene that, then they could participate?
Yeah.
Great. So Pam, would you call the role for Legislative Matters?
I will definitely do that. Counselor Jared?
Here.
Counselor Elkins? Here. Counselor Moulton?
Here.
And Counselor Nash?
Here.
And just for the record, I'm going to state that the, the Legislative Matters Committee convened at 5:40 PM. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Moulton?
Thank you. Yes, I, I have a question or a couple of questions to follow up on Counselor Foster's question about legislation, state legislation superseding a local ordinance. My interpretation of the Northampton ordinance, it states that it shall be unlawful for any city official to expend any city resources to obtain, retain, access, or use any face surveillance system. I interpret that very broadly, particularly the word resources. I interpret that to include money, spend money, time, to spend any time by city officials, anybody representing the city. If, if this, is that interpretation correct? And if, if the legislature passes legislation which adopts the major recommendations of the commission, which portions of the Northampton ordinance would be superseded and which would be left in effect?
Counselor, I think I missed the beginning of your question because my computer was acting up, but I think I get the gist of it, so I can try to answer it. The portions of, the only, the only thing in the ordinance that would not, I mean, it's sort of hard to know because the legislature is still working on this bill. But, you know, if they do what the recommendations say, then the only thing that would change is that the Northampton Police Department would be able to get a warrant or in an emergency, not get a warrant, and take a photograph of someone that they want to identify in a felony investigation and send it to the state police. And the state police would be able to do a facial recognition search on that image and return information about it to the Northampton Police for that criminal investigation.
Also, Counselor Moulton, your, your understanding of resources without getting into the piece of legislation statewide, it's correct. And, and one of the reasons why, if, 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 if the members of the council take a look to the different ordinances that we have passed across the Commonwealth, I think Northampton is one of the few that says, rather than saying no city official, no city resources. And that's certainly in, in, in direct relationship to the understanding of the power of the city council and the charter. And that, that, that's the reason of that phrase, of that phrasing and the framing. But I have to say, your understanding of the, the, your definition of resources is accurate to the intention.
Thank you.
Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Counselor Gore. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, great. I'm in my car, trying this technology for the first time. So anyway. So Kate and Javier, thank you so much for being here today. This is really great. And that, and I guess that the big question, question is, in terms of our facial recognition ordinance, do I, my understanding from previous conversations we had, that you recommend no changes, correct?
Correct.
That's right.
Cool. That, that sounds great. So we're on the mark with that. And then the thing is that, that in, in my mind, this is, this is not just about facial recognition, this is about more broadly about surveillance protections in general. And one of the things that came up while we were discussing dashboard cameras, a lot of concern about license plate reading technologies. And there were some instances in California where data like that had been collected. And if, if it wasn't quite, from what I recall of the situation, is, is that it's not clear if it was intentional or not, but a lot of data had been collected as, by cruisers on, on a highway. And that, so my thought is this, is that, does the ACLU have a position on license plate reading technology, or is that something we can expect coming down the road?
We do. Yes, Counselor, we do have a, a position on license plate readers. So license plate readers are a technology that anybody actually can use. You could buy one if you wanted to, but governments use them quite a bit, police departments use them. And what they do is they scan all the license plates of all the cars that pass by them. So some of them are stationary, they can be under bridges, on light poles, you know, like surveillance cameras, they can be anywhere. Others are on police cars or a big user of these is actually repo trucks that drive around communities. They, they often have license plate readers on them, collecting data from all the cars that they pass by. There's a huge private industry that is dominated by a couple of companies that, you know, lease this technology to repo men and others and collect all of this data and then sell subscriptions to it, to government agencies, police departments, ICE, the FBI, et cetera. So essentially what this enables is the mass tracking of where everyone's driving all the time. And so, you know, if you have a subscription to one of these services, you can type in someone's license plate number and you'll see a list of every time that, that car was captured by one of these cameras, a picture, the date and time, and the geographic location where that surveillance took place. So there are, there are two different ways that this technology can be used by police. One is to find cars that they want to do some sort of enforcement action with. So, you know, police officers who have a license plate reader on their, on their squad car, they may get an automatic alert if a car drives by them that is on a list, right? So it could be an Amber Alert, it could be somebody who has an outstanding warrant, could be somebody who's wanted by police for questioning, whatever it is. That's one way. But the other way the technology is used is essentially just dragnet mass surveillance of, of where everyone is going all the time. And these records can be used not just to know where someone is right now, but to know where someone was two weeks ago, two months ago, two years ago, two decades ago, depending on how long the data is stored. Can be used to determine a pattern of someone's life, you know, when they usually drive down a given street, when they usually are home, when they're not, et cetera. So we think that there ought to be state law to regulate license plate readers. Dozens of states, maybe, I don't know, 20 or something like that, have passed laws regulating police use of license plate readers. Massachusetts is not one of them, unfortunately. There is legislation that was filed this session that we support. We've been supporting license plate reader legislation for years now, although it hasn't passed the legislature, unfortunately. One of the key things that we think ought to be done is that there should be a limited retention period for those data. You know, the police frequently say, well, you know, if there's a murder in a neighborhood and there's a license plate reader nearby, we'd like to know what cars were in that area around the time of the murder, right? Or a kidnapping. Okay, that makes sense. So keep the data for a couple of days then, right? Or a week, or even two weeks. But beyond that, what you see is, is not so much responding to actual incidents, but instead, the, you know, the creation of this huge data pool that enables the tracking of not just people who are suspected of crimes or serious of crimes, but everyone. So everyone in this meeting who has a car, your license plate reader data showing your movements is in one of these databases, or probably multiple of them, and can be accessed by police in Massachusetts at any time, without any criminal suspicion whatsoever. So we think that's a problem. So we think that's a problem, that that's wrong. You know, the fundamental principle in the United States is that the government should not be following you around, should not be tracking your movements, should not be invading your privacy unless they have a really good reason, and get a warrant in most cases. So anyway, that's the approach that we're taking in Massachusetts, is to limit the retention period for how long police can store this information. And I can send you some follow-up information about that legislation, if you'd like.
Yeah, that'd be terrific. And thank you for scaring me. I had no idea that, that that technology was used by the private sector in such a robust manner. That's quite frightening, so. Yes, please send that to me. And in other words, at this time, in terms of our surveillance ordinance, you wouldn't recommend adding anything around license plate reading at this time? And with the idea that it's being looked into at the state level?
Well, not necessarily. I mean, if, if you're interested in, in the subject, we would be happy to have a conversation about what an ordinance on license plate readers could look like in Northampton.
Okay. I look forward to having that conversation.
Good.
I just, I just want to add, Counsel President Nash. So in, in 2019, the ACLU of California, based on a FOIA request, a public record, a federal level public record request, find out that Vigilant Solutions, which is Vigilant, at that time was a smaller company that was later on acquired by Motorola Solutions, shared database with more than 9,000 ICE agents in, in the, in the tracking of undocumented folks driving around. ICE agents, it's Immigration and Cultural Enforcement, sort of armed, armed of DHS, of Arizona Public Security. And, and that, that by itself was around 5 billion data points. And those data points comes, as Kate said, not only from law enforcement, but also from private entities, and private buildings, and private companies, right? So more than, around 80 law enforcement agencies have access to the database. So this comes down to, to how the technology is being used. And as Kate said, I mean, we can, we certainly, we can talk with city council if members are interested on moving an ordinance in relationship to automatic plate reader.
Sounds great. And I can see that Kate has already sent me something. Thank you. We're fighting the technology and it's helping us at the same time, so.
Hey, listen, that's, that's why our program is called Technology for Liberty. We're not against technology. We just think there need to be rules of the road to protect people.
Sounds great. Thank you for being here today.
Counselor Perry?
Yeah, so I think Counsel President Nash's question brings me to something that's on my mind. Is that, you know, when we, when the council crafted this original facial recognition software, you know, we dealt with it, and we kind of baked in a, let's review this in three years, which I think is very forward-thinking. You know, so we just talked about license plate readers. Is there any other technology we should be aware of, or should consider, if we are looking to plan some further legislation to handle, you know, what's coming down the road?
It's a great question. Yeah, I mean, there are a lot of different technologies at play. So one, one option that some municipalities have adopted around data protection and data management and surveillance and privacy is to essentially conduct like a citywide audit, right? To see what kinds of technologies are in use in a municipality, so that the legislative branch, you all, can get a better hold of, you know, what protections exist, you know, what the current policies are like with respect to governing the use of those technologies in different city departments. I think that that might be a good thing for Northampton to do, if it's, if it's, if this is an issue that is important to, to all of you, just to get a sense of what's happening right now in the government, and to communicate to the mayor and the executive branch that the council has an interest in these issues, and that you want to be involved in conversations and policymaking with respect to, you know, not only what kinds of technologies are adopted, but also how they're used. And we at the ACLU would be more than happy to, to participate and to help you out. This is something that we've done formally through ordinances in a number of communities in Massachusetts, Boston most recently. But I think it can also be less formal, you know, if there's a willing partner in the administration, which I assume there is in Northampton. So I'd be happy to, to work with you on that, too.
Thank you.
Counselor LaBarge? You're on mute.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyways, Kate, I thank you very much for the offering of helping us of moving on with this, because I think it is something that I am very interested in, in knowing what type of technology is being used throughout our city. And I agree about a citywide audit being done. I thank you for your help on this, and I'm pretty sure some of us counselors are going to be very interested in having your help. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Any other questions? Okay, well, thanks again to Javier and Kate. I appreciate it. So now we'll move on to ranked choice voting, and Counselor Jared's gonna chair this portion.
Hey, thank you, Counselor Gore. So this is 22.072, an order for special legislation relative to ranked choice voting in the city of Northampton. And we have Bob Boris and Catherine Kay here to give a presentation. And I guess we'll, we'll do that presentation first, and then look for a motion with regard to, each of the committees will need, will need to make a recommendation back to the city council. So, welcome, Bob and Kathy.
Thank you, Counselor. Don't want to be repetitive of what was said in front of the council, and I'm eager to hear any questions that the committees have. So in anticipation of hearing questions, the committee suggests a resource which we can provide to you, which deals with a lot of the mechanics and, and the philosophy of ranked choice voting, and provides an opportunity for you later on, if you wish, to get into some of the weeds to, to find out how it works. But it's a, it's a descriptive document, it's a resource. And if it's okay with you, I'll just go through that quickly now, and then perhaps that will inform some of the questions that, that will come up. Is that, is that okay? That's, that's what, that's what the committee determined would be the best way to, to be helpful tonight. So what I'm, all right?
Yeah, that sounds great to me.
Okay, so what I'm gonna endeavor to do is share my screen. Okay. This, this document comes from Fair Vote, which is an organization that we've relied on, you know, in the time that, in the time that we've done our deliberations. And I just want to go through this to suggest some things that are important to understand. The, we liked, we like this, this, this resource because it presents a ballot. Certainly, an understanding of the ballot is critical to understanding how ranked choice voting works. Similarly, similarly, the education effort to implement ranked choice voting will depend on our ability to, to have our voters understand how the ballot works. And beyond that, to hopefully encourage them to embrace the ballot in all of its manifestations, that is to say, to use it as it's designed. So as you, as you can see in this particular council race, there's, there's six people running, and you get to rank them from up, from one to six, you know. And the notion is, you only mark one, one oval in each column, and you, you complete all the rankings from one to six. Now, if you don't want to do that, you don't have to. If you only want to rank number one, that's, that's up to you. But again, I think it's very important, certainly from an education standpoint, for voters to understand why it is in their interest to mark all the ballots. And that's something that, that the city can consider, should it get to the point where education is, is on the table. The, the power of ranked choice voting is that it, it provides a greater degree of representation and a better expression of what the voter's intentions are by virtue of the fact that, of the way that votes are counted. So if you're a voter and you have a chance to select a number one candidate, you also have a chance to select a number two. And, and, and therefore, you can be impactful in not just one person winning, but more than one person winning. Also, in the, in the way that the votes are tallied, which you'll see in a moment, and we'll again offer to show that little two-minute cartoon that we saw at the city council, just to affirm some of these things. But the way that the math works, in the transferring of excess votes from candidates who are deemed to have been elected, that means they've collected enough votes to exceed the threshold, which will, which this document will show in just a moment. So when the transferring of excess votes from candidates who have exceeded the threshold, and the transfer up of, of candidates who will not be elected, those actions in totality, in combination, end up with a more representative result reflected of the demographic of a community. That's, that's the power of ranked choice voting, that's how it works. You know, I lived in Cambridge for 15 years, I saw that happen, and that's the power of ranked choice voting. And, and one hopes that that's the reason that 68% of our electorate, you know, endorsed it on the, on the most recent election. But, so if you go through this document, you'll see, you'll see, you'll see a number of, of things that are important to know. Calculating the threshold is one of them. You know, if you're running for election, you want to know what it's going to take to get elected. And in the case of ranked choice voting, it's a function of how many seats are up for the position that, that you're going for. So if it's, if you're in a, if you're in a one-seat race, as seven of, seven of you are, it's the majority. The majority gets elected, 50% plus one vote. If you're running for two seats, as, as, as two of you would be, or two of you get elected, what, what would be required to be deemed elected to, to exceed the threshold is if you get 33% of the number of votes cast plus one. The way the formula works is the number of seats plus one, divided by the number of votes cast creates the threshold, and then you add one to that. So what effectively that means is if you get, if you're running for an out-large race and you, and you collect 33% of the votes plus one, you are deemed to be elected. Knowing what the threshold is, is important because it then determines who has excess votes, and how excess votes are distributed in the, in the subsequent rounds of ballot counting. Again, this document, if you go through it, talks about these things. It gives some clarity to exactly how they work. I'd, I'd like to suggest now that we, we just take, take a minute and review what we saw last week, and it might refresh our memories, and perhaps it'll, it'll, it'll help with what's gonna, is gonna come, come following. It's two minutes long. Is that okay, Counselor Jared? Is that okay? Okay, so let's watch this.
Yeah, absolutely.
Let's watch this one more time. I wonder if I can do this. Well, for some reason, screen sharing is not going to allow me to go from this document into the YouTube where, where it can be found. I might be able to do it. Let me try, let me try this. Okay, this opens another screen. How it works, that's the same screen, that's the same screen. Okay, this is, let's see what happens for this. Well, my apologies. You saw it before, if, you know, if you want to come back later, this was linked to the agenda, and you can come back and look at it at your, at your convenience. It, it does describe the proportional transfer of votes. But I have another way to show that. And that is, down here at the bottom, here is a proportional example of how votes are transferred in a, in a, in an election, okay? So, you know, to vote, you know, that's how the voters vote, to determine winners, you, you calculate the threshold. And, and it talks about that. And so here's a little, here's a little diagram as to how the algorithm works. You count the votes, are there any candidates above the threshold? If yes, they are deemed to be elected. And then what would happen at that moment is, if they have any excess votes, if they have votes above the threshold, those votes would be, would be algebraically proportionally transferred to the second, to the second choices. Okay, so you make those choices, then you go back. As a result of doing the excess transfers, is anyone else above the threshold? If the answer is yes, you repeat that iteration. If, as a result of the transfer surplus votes, there is no one above the threshold, then you go to the, the no limb, and then you would eliminate the last-place candidates. And the number two votes given to the last-place candidates would then be transferred up, and you would again then observe, is anyone crossing the threshold now? I understand that unlike how Cambridge does this, which is, which always was a fairly manual process, the Dominion software that we use does it automatically. So, you know, it's fairly instantaneous, and the city clerk would be able to provide election results as, as they are seen in the, in the, in the ballots that, that have, that have been tabulated on the night of the election. What would remain for the next day would be, would be write-in votes and others. But, but that's, that is sort of the example, or that's sort of the graphing of how the, the algorithm works. And now, here's, here's an example. And it's kind of instructive. It shows the result of a certain election, six candidates are running for three seats. So if you know there are three seats, then the, the equation that we've suggested already says that the threshold, or the, or the limit, the number of seats that you need to get to be deemed to be elected is three seats plus one, or four seats, divided into the number of votes plus one. That's how it goes. This example talks about the representation in, in that particular election, and how the result provides a more representative outcome. But what I, what I want to show you, the, the power of this particular graphic here is that it gives is that it gives a good description of how the allocation of votes proceeds until three candidates are elected. As you can see in round one, um, candidate Perez got 27 point, well, 27.2% of the votes or 2,500 votes. You know that with 9,200 people voting and the, the um, threshold calculations, divide that by four and add one, the threshold is 2,300 votes. So conveniently around number. So um, counselor or, or candidate Perez is the only candidate to exceed the threshold. And he does that by, by 200 votes. So he has, he has 2,500. He only needs, uh, he only needs 20, 2,300. So he has 200 votes to be transferred. That transfer occurs in round two, where you see that proportionally you divide the 200 votes that he has um, to transfer by the, by the 2,500 votes he got. And that, that provides a percentage which is used um, against all of the number two votes that voted for um, candidate Perez. And they're allocated to the other candidates. So you'll notice in round two that the candidate Perez has gone from 2,500 to the 2,300 votes he needed. And the other candidates have come up a bit. However, you will also note in round two that no one has exceeded the threshold. So what happens is the lowest um, vote total among the candidates is eliminated. In this case, that's candidate Smith. Um, her 1,000 votes are then allocated up to all the number two votes in the 1,000 votes that were made for her. You will note as a result of that transfer up in round three, there is still no one who exceeds the threshold. So the next lowest candidate, which is candidate Jackson, his 13, his 1,450 votes are then allocated. And as a result of that allocation, all of a sudden candidate Chan now exceeds the threshold. So you have two of the three candidates deemed to be elected. And um, for round five, what remains to do is to eliminate candidate Lorenzo being the lowest vote getter in the round. You allocate his votes up. And, and as a result of that, candidate Hannah Murphy um, is deemed to be elected. And you have the three votes um, that, uh, the three candidates uh, filling the seats because they have now exceeded the threshold. This is how the allocation of surplus votes and the allocation of votes from candidates not having a chance to be elected occurs. Um, what you see as a result of all of this in this particular district is um, a case where the majority being the Democrats got two candidates in and the minority being the Republican got one candidate in. So this particular system is, is judged to be um, a better representation of what the intentions of, of, of all 9,200 people who cast, cast ballots in that election uh, were. You can, if you want to read through this, it might give a better description to what I tried to abridge for you. Um, but, but that, that in essence is how um, how the system, how the system works. The, the um, challenge or the oppo, the opportunity, let's say, the opportunity for us um, is to convey to the voters in Northampton that it is, it isn't their personal interest to use ranked choice voting the way it was, it was designed uh, to be used. There are, you know, you know, a number of people have spoken leading up to now as to what other attributes of, of the, of the, of the methodology are. And they include, you know, you don't have to do preliminaries and um, and such. But that, that in a nutshell is, is, is kind of the nuts and bolts of, of how, of how it works. The, the committee, as I mentioned in front of the council last time, the committee um, analyzed all the various configurations of, of this, how it can be set up. And there's a number of different ones. And the one that we have selected to be used, which is characterized by what you just saw, is called the, the weighted inclusive Gregory method. It's the one that Amherst uses. It's, it's what's the most pop, popular one. And we, we judged it to be most responsive to the criteria that I outlined to you last week. And I don't want to be repetitive to that, but um, I hope that, we, we hope that this resource can be helpful to you. Uh, we hope that moving forward, the city has an opportunity to create its own resources, which we can, which we can use to educate people. But that's, that's a step down the road. We have to get it. The, the council has to decide what their pleasure is. And then we need to get it through the legislature before we can um, appropriately address the educational opportunities and options that we, that we know about. So with that, what I'm going to attempt to do if I can is stop sharing my screen. And I'm back. I hope that was helpful.
Yes, thank you so much. It was very helpful. Um, so yeah, let's take some questions first from members of the committees and then uh, from members of the public, if, if there are any. Uh, Counselor Elkins.
I uh, I was just going to say that I, if I could be, oh, uh, if I could share the screen, I actually pulled up the video and could play if that's helpful to anybody. I'm also content to let people if they wanted.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Right, let's see.
If you, if you have your earbuds in, it automatically defaults to that. So you might have to.
So uh, so am I hearing you say that I need to change the audio? Okay.
Yes.
Let me try again. All right.
Yeah, and I'm seeing in the chat. Your audio.
Sorry, you were saying? Okay, I'm gonna try again.
Vote for your favorite color.
We are not seeing, uh, we're seeing a different window.
Okay. Too much. Okay, one more time. One more time. Okay, I think this is gonna do it.
Vote for your favorite color.
The instant runoff way.
Instead of voting for just one color, you get to rank your top three.
Well, purple is the best, but if I can't have purple, then I want blue. And if neither of those wins, then I guess I could live with yellow.
Now let's count up everybody's votes.
Under instant runoff rules, it's not enough just to get the most votes.
You need a majority.
More than 50% of the votes.
So purple's ahead, but it only has seven votes. It needs at least 11 to win.
So we eliminate whoever's in last place.
Sorry, yellow fans. We're going to your second choice.
Two more for pink.
One for purple.
No one has 11 votes yet.
Still no majority.
Bye-bye, blue. Three for purple.
Two for pink.
And we have a winner, the instant runoff way.
Um, that was the single seat example. We, we're, it would be good, counsel, if you could, if you could do the multi-seat.
Give me one second and I'll uh,
But we're not seeing it. We're hearing it.
It's all too much. It's all too much.
We got the wrong screen.
Not, not the right window. Yep.
The problem is, is I have it, it shows up as two screens. Just a second. Cause I, I have it uh, that should be it. Is that it?
Yes, it is.
Yay!
The instant runoff way. Now with fractions.
We already showed you how instant runoff elections work when there's only one winner.
But when there's more than one winner, it's a little more complicated.
We have five colors to choose from, and we're going to end up with three winners.
To start, each voter chooses a favorite color, a second choice, and a third.
All right, purple is my first choice. Yellow comes in second, and I'll put blue in third place.
Now we need a scoreboard. There were 36 votes cast. There will be three winners.
In order for a color to win, it needs more than a quarter of the vote. That's because if a color gets that much, then it's mathematically impossible for it to lose.
36 divided by four is nine, and we need just over that.
So plus one is 10.
10 votes is the finish line.
Make it there, and you're one of the three winners.
So let's count the votes.
No one's reached the finish line yet. That means it's time for round two.
And orange got the fewest votes, so it's out.
Everyone who voted for orange first now gets their second choice.
Purple reached the finish line.
In fact, purple has more votes than it needs.
That means each purple voter can take back a fraction of their vote and still leave purple with enough to win.
Under instant runoff rules, that's exactly what they get to do.
Purple has two votes to spare.
And that gets divided among the 12 purple voters.
So each of them gets one sixth of their vote back.
And that little piece will go to their next choice.
Now blue has reached the finish line.
No votes to spare.
So no more fractions. Green is in last place. You know the drill.
Most of these votes are from colors that have already won or are already out.
We call those ballots exhausted.
Yellow didn't quite make it to the finish line, but there's no one else left.
So we have our three winners.
The instant runoff way.
Thank you, counselor. So if, you know, if you view, view that example and then go to the tabular thing that's in the documentation that's with your agenda, you can see precisely how it all happens in a fractional way.
Counselor Elkins, did you have anything else? Okay, Counselor Nash.
Thank you, Counselor Jarrett. Bob and Kathy, thank you for doing all of this. And so I, my, my concern about using the weighted inclusive Gregory method is that it's a little more complex than most people can wrap their heads around. And I'm, I'm wondering if there were other methods that were considered that, um, that might, might be a little more straightforward. Especially once you get into fractions. I, I mean, teaching people fractions. You can talk to any math teacher. And, and this isn't, I, I, I'm hoping you're not feeling criticized here. But I, I'm, I'm just saying that in terms of us going out there and doing the educating, that I, I think that's going to be the, the, the biggest barrier. And that, um, so if, if you could just give us a, a, a little overview as to what those other methods might have been that would not have been, that, that may have been straight, more straightforward, but may have had some very large faults to them.
Well, I'll go first and then Catherine can, can add on. We looked at four or five different methods. And we looked that, looked at them on the basis of a 200-ballot election. And we chose this method as have a lot of other municipalities, like Minneapolis and Minnesota and Utah and, and all the rest. We chose this, recognizing that it's a little more complicated because it, it provides the most defensible outcomes. And some of the other methods, and you'd have, again, it took us a number of hours to do this. Some of the other, some of the other uh, options provide out, provide surprising outcomes that were not defensible. And in fact, caused uh, real problems in some municipalities, including uh, removing ranked choice voting. And as a result of that, um, among, if you reflect on the, the five criteria that we outlined as, as to what went into our decision-making, uh, we chose this one, as did Amherst and others, because to us, um, the fact that fractions are perhaps a little harder to wrap your head around, um, the outcomes were more accept, acceptable. And that, that was the, that in essence was the decision of the committee. Catherine?
Thank you. Yeah, I'll, I'll add um, my comments from a slightly different perspective and that being from the voter's perspective. So when I go in to cast my vote in a ranked choice, on a ranked choice ballot, um, and um, my, 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 the expression of my wishes in that election is more completely, more fully um, included in the results using the weighted inclusive Gregory method. And let me explain what I mean. Um, one alternative that we considered would have um, would have allowed for the, the, when, when a candidate is eliminated in, in a round, because it's the lowest, it's the lowest. because it's the lowest, it's the lowest one. Uh, and then those votes get transferred up. That's pretty easy to understand, right? And, and that's kind of a basic ranked choice voting method. And so one way of doing it is only to do the ranked choice up, right? The, the transfers up. And that's great for me as a voter. If my candidate is, is eliminated in the first round, well, thank heavens, I've got my second choice and I'm not, I can still participate, right? In just making the decision. However, if my candidate has exceeded the threshold on the first round in the, in the, um, in the method that only uses bottom-up transfer, eliminated vote, eliminated candidate transfer, my vote is now kind of irrelevant. I'm out of the picture for the remaining choices. Because my vote would have been used for my first choice, great. But I don't really, it doesn't, it may not count as much for those subsequent races. So in the weighted inclusive Gregory method, a part of my vote will still continue on, will kind of live through the balance of the, of the election result calculations, right? In addition to my second choices and my third choices. My, that, the, that, that, that fraction of that vote that's not needed for my first choice to win is still able to be used. So my wishes as a voter are more effectively, more thoroughly, more completely realized using the weighted inclusive Gregory method. Um, I will say, I will also add that I had to be convinced, over an extended period of meetings, that, that this was in fact the choice because of exactly what you expressed, Counselor Nash, which is how challenging it seems to, to, to explain to the voting populace. And it's, you know, my, my very most deeply held opinion that we need to be able to have faith in our election results. We need to trust what's coming out of, of our elections. And in order to do that, people need to understand how those votes are being counted. And this is complex. And this is the most widely used method of ranked choice voting. The one that we're recommending is the one that is most widely used. It has been successfully used in many municipalities and, and some in the statewide races. And so I, you know, looking at that convinced me that, that, you know, we surely, we surely can, can educate our voters successfully to embrace this, this new method of, of voting in Massachusetts. Does that answer your question?
Mostly, and I'm gonna, I wanna do a follow-up, but I'd like to pass the, the, pass the, the floor on to Counselor Foster, cause I know she's just barely hanging in there today. So... But I, I refer to Counselor Jarrett to recognize her.
Yes, Counselor Foster.
Thank you. Um, and I hear what you're saying about this method, actually. And as you were talking, Catherine and Bob, that really helped to clarify, like, thinking about a race where somebody may have a top choice that they think is gonna win. So maybe they, you know, this allows them to vote, vote for their top choice and their second choice, kind of with integrity, instead of trying to play a guessing game of, well, this person's probably gonna get so many votes, so I'm gonna vote for my second, third choice to try to get them in. So I, I really get that. And actually, clarifying questions I have are for Pam, if you don't mind, Pam. Thank you. Sorry to put you on the spot. Well, I guess you knew.
That's okay. Yep.
Yeah. My questions are more just on the city side and your perspective with managing the election and calculating the results. You know, if, where the city's at with technology. We currently have purchases we would need to make, what it may cost. And then also, I'm curious, um, I guess the software's probably quite quick, but I'm wondering if it would end up being longer to see election results in a race with multiple candidates.
Well, you know, first, let me just say that elections are always a stressful, you know, a stressful day, because we begin at seven o'clock in the morning and we go until eight o'clock at night. And the introduction of the tabulation software may mean for a city like North Hampton that we get preliminary results on election night, just as we normally would. But that the, um, the actual application of the ranked choice voting software could or may likely happen the following day. And the reason for that is that, you know, a lot of times we don't even get the final person or voting precinct coming in sometimes until 11 o'clock at night. And that might make it a little bit difficult to sort of evaluate and make sure that we're running the software the way that it's intended. So what it would look like is that the actual ballot will be different, right? Cause you'll rank every candidate that's on your ballot. And then the tabulation software will in fact read just as it reads today. So where ranked choice voting comes in is after the election is closed out, we get an initial printout, which will, can still be shared at the voting precinct. But then the actual software that runs the scanner will need to be brought back to the city clerk's office and run in the tabulation software that we don't currently have available today. So it's, would probably be somewhere between $8,000 and $9,000 investment for the city to purchase the equipment, which is probably something like a laptop and the software that goes along with it to conduct that after-election tabulation at the very end of the election. So, um, you know, you, there, I mean, we've talked about the fact that, you know, that for close races, you may not be able to determine on election night, you know, who the, the ultimate winner or winners are going to be. But, um, you know, if this is the preferred, preferred method of elections, it's certainly doable from a process perspective. So I hope that, that answers some of your questions.
It does, thank you. It's the process, that your perspective on process was what I was really interested in. So thank you.
Yeah, I, you know, it definitely will require us getting a group of people together to sort of look at, you know, fine tuning what that process is ultimately going to be. You know, but I think it's, it's very doable. And, and we have a great support network with our friends at LHS. LHS is the company that sold us the Dominion software and the tabulation equipment that we use today. And they've been very instrumental in helping us to conduct mock elections and take a look at what the results and the outcome are gonna be based on a whole set of criteria that we set forth to sort of see how, what options there are in the, the tabulation software that, that could help us do, as Catherine mentioned. And that is to predict, um, you know, to sort of make sure that the voter's per, per intent can be determined based on the ballot that they submit.
Just as a follow-up, uh, if, are you done, Counselor Foster, anymore? Yeah. Write-in candidates. Uh, how, how is that handled? And does that present, would that, would that require manual tabulation? If, if there was, say, a significant write-in?
Well, to, well, today, um, you know, just as the, there is an adjudication process of sorts today, the write-in candidates have to be done before the ballots actually come back to City Hall. So we do have some sort of understanding of what write-in candidates there are. And, but the actual finalization of those write-in candidates will have to take place after, you know, we close down the election. And it's only in those really, um, you know, we've had a couple of close write-in candidate elections. Of course, you're probably familiar with which ones I'm referring to. And, you know, tho, those are something that we could probably work into the tabulation software if we know in advance. But for those that aren't, you know, that we're not able to predict prior to the election and we have no knowledge about, um, those will have to be done on election night. And then the adjudication process of getting them all together will happen at the very end before we close out the election.
Thank you. Counselor LaBarge?
Yes, Pam. I'm glad I heard about write-in candidates. What, we've had people before who ran on stickers. What happens with that?
Well, the process would essentially be the same. You would, you know, put your sticker on the ballot in the write-in location. And then after the election is closed out, the, you know, tho, those, the write-in candidates have to be hand-tallied. So that piece of it will still continue for every election, and that process will remain the same.
Okay, thank you. Also to Pam, I think I heard you say it would cost $8,000 to $9,000. That is for the equipment?
Right.
That allocates for every precinct at $8,000 to $9,000? That's for a primary and then the regular election?
Right, so you'll recall, Counselor LaBarge, um, I think, uh, but Chair Bull Rice had mentioned that we, this would eliminate preliminary elections in the city. So we wouldn't have those. But essentially what this is, is it's one laptop for the entire city that will be placed in the city clerk's office with that software. So everyone will bring back their software from their individual machines. And then those results from the individual machines in the 14 polling locations will be downloaded into this one particular software and, um, a computer, I should say. And then the software will, will churn the data to get us the, the total summary for the entire city.
Thank you, Pam.
So yeah, so it's the purchase of that one unit plus the software plus preventive maintenance, whatever we need to purchase to keep it up and running, so.
Plus you have to pay for the staff also in every precinct.
Right, so that, so that won't change. The, the staffing at the polling location is dictated by, by Massachusetts state law. We're required to have certain people there. But the, there will not be any additional staff as a result of using ranked choice voting. We, we may choose to do that in the very beginning to help people, you know, sort of understand the ballot. We can't help them to figure out who to vote for, but we certainly can help them how, um, you know, in terms of how to mark the ballot and how to make sure that they have the right information on how ranked choice voting will be conducted in the city.
Thank you so much.
Counselor Moulton?
Thank you. Thanks again to Bob and Kathy for all the work that you and your committee did on this. Well, I share Council President Nash, Nash's concern about that this is rather daunting to explain to the average voter. The selling point, I think, is that it will keep every voter in the game for as long as it lasts with both the bottom-up reallocation and the excess votes for candidates who have passed the threshold. So if they're, to use a baseball analogy, if there are nine rounds, nine innings, you'll be playing for all, all nine innings. And I think that's, that's, that's the important selling point, as well as the fact that it's been used successfully. And I believe the, the committee believes that, that Minneapolis is a good model for educating voters about this. We can use their educational program as a, as a template in North Hampton.
Can I follow up? Can I speak?
Yes.
Uh, thank you. Following up what Catherine described in terms of having her particular vote play out throughout the, throughout the whole process, I would just like to compare, if I can, simply, well, the advantage of this weighted inclusive Gregory method to one of the other methods. And that's the Cambridge method. And Cambridge has been doing it since 1940 and, you know, loves the way they do it, et cetera. However, our method is better. And I wouldn't say that to my friends in Cambridge, but I'm saying it to you. And the reason that our method is better is because of the inclusive, inclusive part of the weighted inclusive Gregory method as compared with how Cambridge does it. As you have seen, how we would do it would be to transfer fractional portions of every vote cast for a candidate that was elected. So everyone who voted for a candidate who got elected would have her fractional vote transferred to the number two. Say 20%, as in the example that we saw. 20% of my number two vote would go to the number two person. In Cambridge, they don't do that. What they do is they select 20% of the ballots. So that's only one out of every five ballots. And then they transfer the vote that's in that ballot. So in their reallocation process, the expression of only 20% of the voters remains in the game, as Councilman Moulton pointed out. The way we're gonna do it. And the reason why three other cities in Minneapolis have followed, in Minnesota, excuse me, have followed Minneapolis's lead in using this particular method is that the expression of all the voters stays in the game as long as possible. And that's why the committee said to you, in what we're, in what we are recommending best reflects the, the, the feelings of all of the voters in, in total. And that, I, I hope you understood that. But that, that essentially is why this particular method is the one that is held sway in, in, in the municipalities that have successfully implemented ranked choice voting.
Thank you for that. Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Alex. Counselor Jarrett?
You can call me.
I yeah, I'm trying, you know, I got off a plane, I'm still a little fuzzy. So maybe let me try asking this, I was asking from the best side, maybe so, because. Um Bob, you've mentioned this, you know, most defensible. And that tells me that there's like something bad that can happen, so. What is it we're avoiding by by using this method, you know, like what what are some outcomes that were just like? Oh, this this was terrible, so.
And then, okay, I'm going to follow up on on the way Kathy, you know, presented her her. Presented her thinking in the matter, if you use the if you use the bottom up allocation. The expression of the voters who voted on candidates who did not get elected. Is going to be expressed in the number two votes. That has the potential of surprising. The voters who voted in the majority for the one, two and three candidates. It it has it has caused some disruption in some places.
So. An example could be the person who won the first round could be knocked out in the second or third round.
We saw that happen in a couple of circumstances in the two hundred ballot samples. That we ran according to those those options, that is the case councillor. Not and then not not necessarily the the number one, but the number two and three in a three person race.
So you could end up with a situation where somebody. Did really well in like the third and fourth rounds and carries the day. But they were in last place in the first round.
That sort of outcome, yes, and in fact, that phenomena. Has caused has caused rank choice voting to be taken to be be removed in in certain jurisdictions.
Okay, so based on that, I'm willing to teach people fractions. So anyway, yeah, so yeah, I I think we have some work here, but yeah, that explanation is really helpful.
Are there other councillors who have questions before I go to members of the public?
So I I think our our timeline and our process will. Be that this will go back to city council for you to vote on whether or not. Accept the councils, I mean, the committee's recommendation. Right, and then if that is the case, then the mayor will likely move this forward to the state legislature. Parallel to that, we've been asked by representative Sabadosa to have the elections. Division review the. The language for any concerns that that, you know, might be contrary to state law. So the and I think that that is the plan that we will, you know, certainly do that because. If we don't do it ourselves, then we know that this the representative Sabadosa suggested that. The the legislative committees will do that. And, you know, make sure that the elections division has a chance to review it. I also understand that there is the the need to put this on the ballot. And so we're going to have to try to figure out with attorney Seawald. What it what the edu- the voter education is going to have is going to look like. Either at some point around when this question is on the ballot, because. You probably are already aware that we 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 have to remain neutral. When presenting this particular question to the voter, we can't advocate for it. And we can't use any sort of city resources to promote a question that's going on the ballot. So that's going to be something that the city council, myself. And the executive branch are going to, you know, have to figure out. Prior to this question being placed on a city ballot. How is that education going to happen and how can we be sure that it's neutral? And doesn't promote what? What? You know, the the ranked choice voting method.
You you've seen, you've seen how it was done in in Minneapolis and independent agencies. Band together to put together. Educational things. Case here. You know, I have this, I have this notion, Amherst is in a similar circumstance as us and. To me, a wonderful outcome would be if we go up to the legislature, the legislature blesses us and blesses Amherst. And then we do a co- we 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 encourage a cooperative effort. From some of these independent advocates to to work together on the electorate of both cities. If if it doesn't happen that way for us. We are left to be doing this in twenty twenty five rather than twenty twenty three. Hence. You know, hence the urgency that the the committees felt in trying to get something to you. Meaningful and efficiently in order that a sooner rather than later outcome can be achieved.
I saw councillor LeBarge's hand. Okay councillor Elkins.
It seems to be when this, when that question of voter education kind of go along the lines of. For instance, like the over the override votes that we've had or municipal broadband. Where some some election committee is is formed and and they're tasked with. Raising funds for the, you know, for the education and then, of course, like the override. Mayor Narco, it's, you know, was was free, he's free to, he was free to advocate and and so certainly. Within that, it's just the clerk's office that has to remain remain neutral. I I think I think the 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 education component of this is going to require a. A little bit more of an initiative and fundraising, more like a ti- a typical campaign. Then than other other ballot questions have been be- before us, but. I that's a good point that you raised Pam to. To tee, you know, to tee up the the that the campaign around this and education around it, just so people know what their voting are, it might be. Sort of beyond many other ballot questions we've faced before.
Councillor Perry.
Yes, so I've been timidly raising my hand to and fro because education was really. Something I I hone into because, you know, we we are living in a time where. I feel like voting rights are being eroded, and so I'm I'm very heartened by the fact that we are trying to. You know, do the opposite in Northampton, but I I think that it is a gargantuan task to try and educate our population and. You know, I know that Robert had mentioned that education will come later, but. I was wondering if there are other examples of the Minneapolis of cities who are who have tried to implement this that you can maybe send to to me or other councillors. So we can see what failed because while it's nice to look at another city, Northampton is very unique in our population. So I I just asked that if there's anything else I can look at or we can all look at to see what education will look like. Because we we do want to be ahead of this curve, because there is a huge learning curve. You know, we're dealing with the time where everything, it seems in our world is being upended, whether it's because of the pandemic and and things that are happening. So to. To believe that something as fun like. As impactful as changing how we vote is just going to easily pass where people are going to process it, I think. You know, we have to be cautious of that, so is are there other examples of of things you could point us to?
Resources are abundant councillor, to to start with, just go to the the fair choice. Site that is in your agenda, right, and then also I I encourage you strongly. To visit our friends at voter choice mass voter choice MA. Andy and Greg have have been super, their websites are full of information, it's it's. Though that's where you should start, you know, start with start with the local folks, voter choice MA, go to Fairville. And. And that would be a good start for you. And then beyond that, there's. It it's pretty easy to find resources on what other New Jersey's, New Jersey's done a great job. The state of New Jersey's done a great job, the state of Maine has done a great job, so. There's a lot out there, I wouldn't presume to suggest what would be the best for Northampton. But I would again, the reason that we can keep coming back to Minneapolis is that they did such a comprehensive effort. And it was so successful that other municipalities in Minnesota have gone that way, so I mean, that's a real good model, but. A whole lot of what. You you would want to look at is available in the two places that I've suggested.
Um let me just, um I I have something to add and also I need to apologize, I need to leave this meeting. Now to start another one, I apologize for that, I'm very grateful for your interest and your great questions and. And the thought that you're putting into this and so the one piece I wanted to add councillor Perry, one thing. That some municipalities have done or states when they've adopted moved to adopt this is. A mock election using the, you know, so so I think in one of them, it was like, what's your favorite park? You know, or what are your three favorite parks, right, to kind of show the show the multiple winner scenarios? And 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 done some work with something like that, so people get used to using the ballot and they can see. Results tabulating, you know, kind of in real time on on a and an online site or something like that, so. I think that there are some really good opportunities for education and anytime we're talking about. Voting and a change in voting or or anything about that, it just raises the profile. Of the the electoral process and how important it is and I'm excited. That this will do that for Northampton and will get even more people interested in voting. Actually voting, registering to vote, so I think it will actually have added benefits. In addition to just the task, which is which is large of explaining this new way of doing things. I think it's a really exciting opportunity, so again, I'm sorry that I need to leave now, I I'm, you know, delighted to. Continue to be part of. Whatever we need to do, thanks so much.
Yeah, thank you.
You for your work Kathy.
Yes, very much.
But your concern councillor is is well taken in the erosion of voting rights. One of the, it would certainly be wonderful if we can continue the momentum that was seen in Northampton the last election where sixty eight percent of. Of voters endorse this, I mean, we we feel there is momentum and we'd like to, we'd like to leverage that momentum.
Okay, I want to be mindful of the time as I know city services does have other items to take up. Are there any other questions from councillors? Any from members of the public? Saw a hand earlier, Andy or Greg?
Andy had his hand. Good.
Hey, Andy.
Hey, sorry, just wanted to make a follow up comment about the the rounds of voting that are used in rank choice voting, there's. There's only a winner after someone has reached the election requirement, before that point, there are only leaders, so. It's we try to avoid that language of saying someone has won the first round. And because again, you know, again, they might not win the second round, so we want to emphasize. You know, it's it's that requirement, that election requirement that's important to to talk about during education. So people don't think that their guy won, but now he's lost, which is a very common refrain. Now, because there are people out there who don't completely understand it, so that's that's the comment I wanted to make. Thanks, also, I just mentioned voter choice is definitely going to be involved in helping to educate. The people of Northampton when this is brought up for for voting, so and. We are continuing to be accessible for questions between now and final election day, thanks.
Thank you. So I would, we need to do a motion from each of the committees. What they're about their recommendation, so legislative matters, I'm looking for a recommendation. Mom councillor Molton.
I move that we. Send this to the council with recommend to approve.
Positive recommendation.
Yes, positive recommendation for the committee's report.
I second that.
Second, great, we have a motion, a second, and with city services. Do I have a a motion for a recommendation?
I I will make a motion for a positive recommendation.
Okay, so the item is on the floor in both committees discussion. So I will. Give my my thoughts. You know, I I have heard the concerns about it being a complicated procedure. And but once I understood it, it makes tremendous sense. You know, I love the the opportunities for the anti gerrymandering that were described in some of the the websites that I looked at. Having a vast majority of the of the voters electing someone that they are having a stake in. In that. In in and, you know, in in each round. And not want not having to worry about wasting votes or or strategic votes, strategic voting, so I think it's worth. Did the education that we'll have to do, and I'll be supporting this. Any other discussion? Before we take a roll call. Okay, seeing none, let's do legislative matters first on a positive recommendation to city council.
Councillor Elkins?
Yes.
Councillor Molton?
Yes.
Councillor Nash?
Yes.
Councillor Jarrett?
Yes. So that passes unanimously, now for city services.
Councillor Gore?
Yes.
Councillor LaBarge?
Yes.
Councillor Perry?
Yes.
Councillor Foster?
Yes.
And that also passes, so this, I think just the we're the board of registrars, this has also been sent to. And then we'll take this up. At our May nineteenth meeting, as I believe is the one we'll take it up for our vote. So thanks, everyone, so at this point legislative matters is done, so. I would look for a motion, well, first, let me thank Bob Boris and Kathy K. For coming and Andy Anderson and Greg Dennis and and everyone, clerk powers for. Being here as well. And I'd take a motion to adjourn legislative matters and then city services will continue.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Sorry, I'm just noting the time here. Okay, so councillor Molton.
Yes.
Councillor Nash?
Yes.
Councillor Jarrett?
Yes.
And councillor Elkins?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, everyone, back to councillor Gore.
Thank you.
Thanks councillor Jarrett. Councillor Perry?
Yes, could could we take maybe a five minute break?
Yes. Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Yeah, you're welcome. No problem.
Those kids are like, are you abandoning me, Dad? No.
We've been waiting for the bears to come back.
Oh.
Yes. Coming a nuisance.
All right, so Counselor Labarge, you interviewed Paul Foster Moore for Conservation Commission?
Commission? I'm having problems. You're echoing for some reason.
Oh, I, did you interview Paul Foster Moore for the Conservation Commission?
Now I hear you. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. With Paul Foster Moore. He lives at one forty-seven Turkey Hill Road Florence and this term is April twenty twenty-second through June twenty twenty-fifth. And that's to fill a vacancy. I had a lengthy talk with Paul, who I do know as the counselor in Ward Six, but I no longer will have Paul anymore. But anyways, this is the reasons why Paul would like to join the Conservation Commission of Northampton. He feels that joining the Conservation Commission would be the logical next step for him, given that he has had the history of citizen involvement in protecting and expanding our public lands. Paul was the co-chair of the Ward Six Committee to save the mineral hills and have them ultimately put into conservation restricted status, working closely with my city counselor, Mary Ann Labarge, and the planning director Wayne Biden. Also, I want to include, we also had Dr. Joanne Pissett, who kindly, both her and her husband, Dr. Per, had hired an environmental specialist for us. This was not an easy job for Ward Six, but we gave it a good fight and we won it. Anyways, Paul, also, we all worked very closely with our planning director Wayne Biden, which we work closely as well with the North Hampton Rio Natural naturalist Lori Sanders to understand the flora and fauna of the area as we've worked steadily with the Planning Board, City Council, the Conservation Commission, and the Cestro Land Trust to buy the quarry on Turkey Hill Road and turn it into an area of contiguous wildlife corridors and hiking trails now serving the greater community. And believe me, we had such a collection going on in our ward. People coming with piggy banks. I'm serious, piggy banks to help us hire attorneys to get that quarry. At that point, which Paul is trying to explain is the city at that point in the beginning could not step in, step in so we could go ahead and make that conservation land. We had a concrete business up there with eighteen wheelers coming. I had a resident who went out for us because he was retired, went out there early in the morning until the truck stopped six days a week. Finally, I was able to step in a con, as a counselor with the building inspector and that because of the amount of trucks coming down that residential area. I don't know if any of your counselors been there. It's absolutely beautiful as conservation land. And I'm proud of it. I'm proud of Paul. I'm proud of all the residents of Ward Six who donated, even artists donated pictures so we would collect money for that. It was not a cheap process, let me tell you, but we won. Anyways, I, I want to explain a lot about Paul. Anyways, the effort synthesizes him to fragile of our natural resource, which in turn deepened his passionate interest in preserving wetlands and public interest resources from destruction of adverse alterations. Paul has been a member of the nature convert since the nineteen eighties. And he is an outdoor recreationalist who has climbed all the mountains, Indiana, goodness, and the White Mountains. He has climbed Mount, which I don't know, K A T A H D I N several times, Catan several times. I have submitted Mr. Whitney, Mr. Rainier, and Dino. I have seen kayak in the Gulf of Maine for years, Cape Breton, and Prince William Sound of Alaska and primitive and remote areas. I say this is not to boast, but rather to illustrate how much I have thrown myself into nature and all four seasons around North America and how I have come to appreciate clean water, unspoiled premise in my backpacking and paddling. It is all fragile and in need of protection from abusive development. As Paul understands the work of the commission, it is tasked with reviewing development proposals that might potentially pollute service or groundwater supplies or harm swamps, floodplains, wildlife habitat, and riverfront zones. Its work is consistent with the Federal Clean Water Act and the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act through the Department Environmental Protection. Paul is inspired by his four friends who have given him so much of themselves to the city. Jim Nash, who co-chairs the Board of Directors with him at the Cutchins Programs for Children and Families. Dennis Bildwell, former city councilor, George Kohat, with whom he recently helped to remove one point five tons of trash from a King Street location and Kevin Lake, who he, who I have known for years. It's time for me to step up now that I am mostly retired and want to get back to the city where we have raised two sons. I am not content to spend all my time fussing over my lawn and watching too much TV. There's too much to do. And in these troubled times, it feels good to focus on local challenges that have solutions. And I would like to make a motion to approve Paul Foster Moore to the Conservation Commission with a positive recommendation to full city council.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Pam, can you do a roll call?
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Counselor Gore?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have a bunch of reappointments. Let's see. Brian Adams for the Community Preservation Committee. Term July twenty twenty-two to June twenty twenty-five, that's a reappointment. See Mason Marone for the Conservation Commission, July twenty twenty-two to June twenty twenty-five, reappointment. Emma Cornwell to the Disability Commission. July twenty twenty-two to June twenty twenty-five, reappointment. Martha Lyon to the Historical Commission, July twenty twenty-two to June twenty twenty-five, reappointment. Megan Pack to the Human Rights Commission, July twenty twenty-two to June twenty twenty-five, reappointment. So does anyone want to make a motion recommend them as a group?
Yes, I would like to take Community Preservation Committee, Brian Adams, Conservation Commission, Mason Maron, Disability Commission, Emma Cornwell, Historical Commission, Martha Lyon, the Human Rights Commission, Megan Pack, all as in a group with a positive recommendation to full city council as reappointments.
And I will second that.
Okay, roll call please, Pam.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Counselor Gore?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Okay, now we're on to new business. Do any counselors have new business?
I'm hungry.
Counselor Foster?
I'll make it quick, Counsel Labarge, so you can get something to eat. I just wanted to let you know that for the June meeting, I invited Bill Newman from the ACLU and former counselors Dwight and Klein. They were the three that worked on the original facial recognition technology ordinance. And former counselor Dwight and Bill Newman can come. Former counselor Klein is just checking her schedule. So that's just, you know, so we can wrap up that conversation. And also Patrick McCarthy. Did I get that correct? Mayor Shara appointed him as a new central services director and I would anticipate that being referred to us in June.
And what is that for?
Central services.
Oh, okay.
Okay, thanks, Karen. All right. Now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Roll call? Do we get a second?
You need a second.
I thought I heard Counselor Labarge as well, so I took her as the second.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so Counselor Counselor Gore?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.